Daisy.
Okay, Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I, um, there was another one in April 7th that talked about, um, the number of supplemental, um, we're going to be discussing later on in the year. And I didn't understand why, how, where the numbers came from, I guess, my question.
What I, um, I think what you're referring to is you noted that there was a question about the five through 12 activities, I believe. And so we did send out an amended, um, section of the amendment that said that it would be selected activities to be determined at a future point. So was that not what you were?
I didn't, I was, I didn't see it.
Okay, it should have been, when we guys packed it, it came out yesterday. So that amendment is fine.
Do you hear? Did you see?
Oh, hold on one second.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, so Paul, you may first motion, I need a second for the, um, and Miss Robyn's second. Mrs. Weber, please call the board.
Mr. Val.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Comfort.
Aye.
Question passes. Uh, Mrs. Weber, can you please review the meeting protocol?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Thank you to all of you who are joining us this evening. Mr. Fritz, if you could move on to the next slide, please.
I've got to go to my office. Give you one second.
All right. Um, while, while Mr. Fritz is, uh, going back to his office, I know he's coming back because of our special presentation that we're going to be having here in just a minute. We have, and in our meeting tonight, we do have, um, for those of you who are attending virtually, there is an opportunity to be able to look at the agenda for the meeting out on our district website, under the Board of Education pages, under notices and agendas and minutes. You can also go back to that page once we have approved minutes and they will be posted there. For today, our moderator, um, we have Mr. Lewis, and we also have Mr. Fritz, who's going to be helping us here with questions or technical issues. We ask that you do not use the chat feature of the Zoom meeting for anything that would be in terms of information or questions on the board agenda. That would typically just only be used for items that, um, would be, um, technical issues if you can't hear things such as that. We will be having a, uh, public participation session. At this point in time, typically, we ask people to email their, um, comments to me, Beth Weber. That's what is posted on our website. Um, we will have a short, uh, window of time that if you want to address the board in a public participation session, you can email that request to, uh, Mr. Lewis, and he can notify us that you want to address the board. So with that, I think I have covered everything and...
Can I ask a quick question? Could you please go over that procedure again? So we're supposed to email you now if we have comments?
Um, when, on the meeting posting, this is not planned. The meeting posting, it did note that if you had questions or concerns that you could email them to me, um, on the posting. If you have something that you want to address the board here in the upcoming public participation session, I guess at this point, you could just let us know that you plan to do that and we can call on you at that time.
That would be great. I plan, I would like that in the public participation. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, Mrs. Weber, thank you for reviewing that. Before we move forward to resident participation, Mr. Lewis, do you have any other people wanting to participate?
We'll check my email real quick.
Mr. Lewis, this is Chris Nefflin. I'd like to participate also. I'm here, so if that would be acceptable.
And this is Stacy Martin. I would like to participate if, if possible.
I have no other email communication, but obviously.
Okay. So why don't we proceed with that? Just a reminder to all of our, um, residents that are going to be participating this evening. If you could state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to address the board, um, at which time, um, I will tell you that your time is up. Um, and then we'll go from there. So if, I, I'm sorry, I can't see the screen, but Angie, is it Nefflin?
That's correct, yes.
Uh, Mrs. Nefflin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you so much. And apologies, I didn't realize, um, until you all said this evening that, that we were supposed to email. I didn't think I saw that on the website, so again, my apologies. I'd like to start us off with a quote by Joan Halifax. She shared compassionate action emerges from the sense of openness, connectedness, and the discernment you've created. I appear you before, I appear before you this evening as a mother of a senior aviator, a Sycamore community member, a concerned parent, and someone who seeks to collaborate with you. I ask that we all not only keep our minds open this evening, but also our hearts. I believe if we do this, we will not only be able to discern together the challenges that the relocation of the TIP house has created, but to more importantly, come up with the solutions for these challenges. For those of you listening who may not know, TIP house serves 18 to 21-year-old Sycamore students with disabilities or developmental delays who've deferred their graduation. My son, Jackson, will be attending TIP next year, and he always shares with my husband and I, and anyone else who will listen, that he is going to college, TIP house. And we always say back, yes, buddy, you are. You're going to the college that's right for you. That would be TIP house. Academic excellence, diversity and inclusion, community, character, and collaboration are the values that have made Sycamore a district of excellence. Number five in the city, 10 in the state, 122 in the country. More importantly, because of these values and staff members who regularly go above and beyond, Ms. Esther Adams, Mr. Mater, Ms. Julie Tyerher, Ms. Debbie Emmerich, Ms. Sally Gantz, Ms. Rose Endriola, Ms. Leslie Griffith, and Ms. Jennifer Teal, they helped enable and empower my son to grow into the man he's become. Funny, bright, capable, hardworking, sometimes resilient, and as he describes of his high school experience, famous and popular. To have a son with special needs who describes himself as famous and popular in high school is beyond what I and my husband could imagine. For these reasons, I was shocked to hear in his most recent IEP meeting on April 7th that TIP house, his college, was being torn down so a construction entrance could be created for Green School. I wondered, could there be another entrance? What if this house was occupied by residents? Something else surely would have been done. I was further shocked when talking with children, with parents with children in TIP house. They were told on March 26th, besides, despite administration knowing this information on March 18th. Further disappointment came when I was told one-on-one communication happened with each of the families. This communication and email to discuss concerns. This meeting to my, in this email, a meeting to discuss concerns was promised. This meeting, to my understanding, never happened. To make matters worse, parents were told, were told renovations of the house were happening, so it would meet ADA standards. After looking at the house myself, points of egress, a rant that doesn't seem to meet standard size, being held up by a cinder block, and of course, seeing the bathroom on a video, I have significant concerns these standards aren't being met. And finally, even more disturbing, the level of decreased programming of TIP due to COVID and no communication of a plan to get the kids back to full time, five days a week, as opposed to three. After sharing my concerns with fellow friends and board members, someone asked what my, what were my goals? What do I hope in talking to the board? Such a simple question, but this question allowed me to take a pause and really reflect on what must happen next in order to best serve the most valuable and yet most vulnerable population. Because these vulnerable students, how we treat them speaks volumes about who we are as a community and as a district. My goal is to raise awareness about the TIP house and make sure there's transparency and communication from the board moving forward. This includes TIP house being an agenda item for the next board meeting, so a full discussion can be had. Communication about a plan to get kids back to full time, five days, and an explanation as to why that has yet to happen. Regular updates about the search for a new location in emails and on the Sycamore website. Communication about who's on the team of individuals searching for a new house. Inclusion of a community member or parent representation on this team. Confirmation that an educator in the program is a part of this team. Confirmation that individuals are being offered a voice in the selection of a new location. And again, regular updates at board meetings with notice about these items being on the agenda. Finally, communication and confirmation that standard ADA requirements are being met in the temporary house and will be met in future locations. Thank you for allowing me to have this time with all of you today.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Knefflin. I only see the, I only see Chris. Is that, I don't, are you, is your last name Nefflin as well?
It is. I am Jackson's dad, but if I may, I'd like to defer to Ms. Martin and let her speak maybe first, if that would be okay.
Okay, just a reminder, we have a three-minute limit for each of our, um, our speakers. So if you guys can, please keep that in mind. So Ms. Martin, would you like to go ahead and speak?
I would, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, and please, please state your name and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Stacy Martin. My address is 5351 Don Joy Drive. I have a daughter named Ava, and she's 20 years old and has been a part of the Sycamore community, since the Sycamore community, since she was three years old. She is now a first-year intern at the TIP program. I doubt you've heard mine or my husband's name before, because this is literally the first time that I've been to a board meeting sadly in 17 years, because we have been just so pleased with Sycamore's, uh, special education program. I can't do better, I can't do it more justice than Angie just did. But we have been nothing but blown away by the teachers, the educational assistance in the administration, um, and just the overall experience. And Ava has grown so much during her time at Sycamore. However, the current situation with the TIP move has been quite disappointing and surprising. I have several concerns that I would like to express. First around communication. A letter was sent from Stacy Spencer on March 26th about the unforeseen move of the TIP interns due to the need to demolish the TIP house to make way for a construction entrance. Ms. Cook then discussed it with us casually during pickup of Ava on a school day. We did not receive information about the virtual meeting, as was noted in Ms. Spencer's letter on 3/26. And as was noted in a letter last week from Ms. Bondbrake, we did not have access to one-on-one meetings, as stated we would. The next letter from Ms. Spencer was received on 4/1 stating that the new location was found in Blue Ash. However, no address was provided. We did not receive the address for the new TIP house until 4/7, the day before the interns were to return to TIP. This did not allow for parents to express concern before the move around the location and the house itself. Ms. Cook and her EAs do a nice job, did a nice job working with the interns around this move. That said, this abrupt move in a year with so many accommodations for COVID caused, caused unneeded anxiety for our daughter, and I'm sure for many more. Ava is an adaptable young adult, but this has proven to be too much. My questions are, how is something as major as a demolition of a house not known until mid-March? Why couldn't this have waited for year end or another solution provided to the construction company for the remaining two months of the school year? Why was construction prioritized over this vulnerable population? And why wasn't the new house open for tours for the parents and kids prior to the move? Moving on to the TIP house itself. Simply stated, this house is not accessible. My daughter is in a wheelchair. The district's facilities team installed a temporary ramp held up by cinder blocks. This ramp could not be accessed by Ava independently, which is something she's been working on at the old TIP house. The bathroom cannot be accessed by Ava without assistance. A grab bar was installed, but it was installed across from the toilet, is not conducive to her using the toilet in an accessible and independent manner. She cannot maneuver her chair in the bathroom, and due to the vanity not being accessible, she has to move to the kitchen to wash her hands. She has told Ms. Cook and my husband and myself that she does not want to use the bathroom while at TIP, and obviously, this is not an option. Due to COVID, Ava is also being dropped off and picked up by my husband. The driveway is not accessible with our wheelchair van, so he must park across Blue Ash Road and cross the street to get to the TIP home. And finally, the, the future 2021, 2022 TIP house. We are very concerned about the accommodations for the next school year. What is being done to gain parent feedback and to, to ensure full accessibility that meets the needs of all the interns? As mentioned, the situation was very surprising, given the experience we've had in the past 17 years at Sycamore. The teachers and the EAs have been doing the best they can with what they've been handed. The interns have been troopers and are adjusting relatively well. It is my sincerest hope that the situation is prioritized and a creative and fully accessible option is secured for 21, 22 school year. In addition, my ask is that we as parents are kept in a loop and brought into the planning process as much as possible. I appreciate the time today and your attention to this sensitive matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. Uh, Mr. Nefflin, would you like to speak?
I, very briefly, and I, I thank the board for the opportunity. Uh, I'm at 7690 Shadow Hill Way, the same as my spouse. I will not try to repeat, uh, what has been eloquently stated by both my spouse and Ms. Martin. And I do want to raise a couple of points with the board, and, and they are very straightforward. I was reviewing your site in the last couple of weeks, and there was a strategic planning presentation in January brought by the board. Uh, there were some goals set out there, and two of them kind of grabbed my attention. There was community and parent involvement with communication and engagement being stressed in your strategic planning, and students being provided a culture that is optimally engaging for them. Laudable goals from this board, both strategically planning, and I hope laudable goals that this board will consider as it moves forward in putting out a new TIP house. What I think the parents have seen to this point is not inspiring confidence, unfortunately. Uh, and Ms. Martin has lived it, as has her daughter, and I think very clearly stated a lot of the problems that we have. But the new location, I think we can all agree, is a far cry from what had been the prior TIP house. Uh, I think we can all agree that construction is necessary and strategic planning is necessary. But it's interesting to me that this was such a huge priority and rush to get this done, yet I drove by at the end of last week, and the TIP house was still standing on Aldine Drive. It has yet to be demolished, at least as of a few days ago. So the urgency seems to me to be questionable, and I'd ask the board to consider that as it moves forward. And as Ms. Martin and my spouse have said, there are, from watching the video and driving by the house myself, significant concerns about whether the temporary placement of these students is in compliance with federal, state, local law and codes. I would argue from some of what I've seen, it's probably not. The difficulty here, as everybody's expressed, is simple. We have placed our faith, our trust, our hope, uh, in this board, in this school district, and in the people that work at Sycamore. And from our perspective, for now, almost, you know, 16 years, we have been rewarded richly until this point. You all on the board are professionals. You work in professional jobs. People come to you. They expect you to do a professional job and trust that you will. But if things don't go that way, then sometimes other measures have to be taken. And to that end, that's largely why the three of us are speaking in here. We are disappointed with the way this prior situation has been handled. We hope for better. We hope that this board will consider going forward the suggestions that have been made, including, including a parent rep on a steering committee, including more open communication with emails to the group of parents and students involved, uh, including open house of the new, uh, location once done, uh, and several of the other things that have been mentioned. These are some of your most vulnerable students, often without a strong voice of their own. The board should know that more is expected, and we hope that more needs to be done uh, in terms of establishing a new TIP house and providing a good and safe environment for these individuals. More and better than has been done recently with respect to the relocation. And I would say that this body should know that these children will have people like the three of us that have chosen to spoke up tonight, and others that have not, or maybe are in attendance at the meeting, that will continue to watch out for them, that will continue to advocate for them, and will continue to have their backs if these types of things are not going to be handled appropriately. So I would ask the board, uh, to consider the questions that have been posited, uh, to strongly consider implementing some of the suggestions that have been brought by just three voices of many, uh, out there that love these children, that care for these children, that look out for these children as they go forward. We want to know that we have their backs, and we want to know that you have their backs as well. I thank you for your time, and I wish you a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nefflin. Mr. Lewis, are there any more, um, participants? Okay, thank you very much.
There's one more. Sorry. Andrea, do you want to go ahead? Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, who is it? I don't.
My name's Andrea Hall. I live at 4302 Berry Hill Lane. I would like, I have a few comments regarding the TIP program as well.
Just a reminder, Ms. Hall, you have three minutes. Okay, so if you could keep your comments to three minutes, we appreciate that. Thank you. You may begin.
Um, many of my concerns about the relocation have already been addressed. I am also a parent that this is the first time, or actually, I, I was watching a board meeting at the beginning of the year, trying to figure out what was going to happen with, um, in person and virtual. That was, my daughter's going to be 21 years old, and that was my first exposure to this. I've had a wonderful experience. My daughter has loved school, has an intense disability. She has autism, so changes for her and transitions for her are extremely difficult. So coming at this from a slightly different, um, angle than children that possibly like, Ms. Martin has a child with a physical disability. At the beginning of the year, I found out about Abby's programming, my daughter's programming, I think a week or two before she was supposed to begin. My kindergartner, I knew her program well in advance. She has been in school. Uh, my kindergartner has had no interruptions other than the school-wide, um, virtual days. Abby's program was cut in half. She, um, attends three days out of her five days. The other days, we've had to find, um, various people to support us taking care of her. In addition to that, um, her program is regularly canceled for meeting days, and for days that the, the high school is taking standardized tests, which really do not affect my daughter. In the month of April, my daughter has only attended six days of programming. My kindergartner has been in school for fif, will be in school for 15 days in the month of April. To be honest with you, the, the, I was told that the, the size of the, the TIP house limited the number of students that could be in participation per day. The, the house that they are using now is even smaller. I've asked Ms. Spencer about when, what is the plan to get our students back to full-day programming? And my only response was in relation to IEP and service hours based on need. So, um, my plea to you is that we'd like our children in full-day programming back to full day, or at least being communicated when that will happen. I truly, we value all of the teachers and all of the, the people that have worked with us over the year. But this has been, in addition to dealing with COVID, one of the most challenging years for us. My daughter wakes up every day wanting to come to school, and she's not able to come to school. And socialization is, is more important to her than, and to all of us than, than anything else. So, um, I just wanted to express my concerns that, um, that we truly are waiting for that communication of when we can get back to our participal participation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Weiss, I would, I would let you know that I have received, um, some questions related to the TIP house move from Scott Lucas. I don't know that they are questions we can answer right now, but I will forward those to the appropriate person, um, for response.
Okay, thank you, Mrs.
Great, thank you. This is Scott Lucas, 10235 Pendry Drive. Thank you there. More procedural questions about, uh, about the entrance, about the construction bid, about notification and the proposal of tearing it down. I think they'd be relevant to the stream of communication.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lucas. We will, um, get your questions to the appropriate person and get those answered for you. I want to thank all of the parents.
Can I ask if Mr. Lucas could ask the question so that we can all hear what they were as it relates?
Sure, I can do it, and I can do it in less than three minutes. Uh, the first one was, was this, uh, entrance a part of the construction company's original bid and plan? So did we know about it when we were evaluating both the contractors, as well as their plans and their costs? If so, can we see how it was proposed to the board, um, in that original plan? If it was not in the original plan, when did they propose the use of this property as an entrance? Was it an addendum to the original plan? And did that addendum raise or lower the cost of their original bid? Are we saving money on the construction bid by doing this? Or are we adding money to the construction bid by taking this house down? Have all the other entrances been explored and exhausted? Can we see that study that explored all the other angles of egress to the property? Was that done by the board, by the construction company, or the city? And what makes this entrance unique, that it must be used? Is it a cost savings? Is it a topographic issue? Why are we in this situation? Those are the questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lucas. We will get those questions, like I said, to the appropriate person who can provide some answers. And I'd like, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank all of the parents who have, um, shared their thoughts with us this evening. Thank you. Okay, we will move forward to, um, recognitions, um, about, uh, Mr. Horstoffel.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Um, so moving on in the agenda, I think it's important that great organizations um, take time to recognize milestone events. Um, and we have that unique opportunity and when we think about milestone events, there's usually milestone people behind those events. Um, and we have a unique opportunity tonight to do just that. And part of the reason we are doing that is because uh, we are bringing to close uh, one of our um, tried and true activities at Sycamore Junior High School. Um, as the board knows and as, as some members of the community know, this year we had to bring to close and our junior high baseball program. That, that's as a result of a limited participation and really a dwindling number of local teams that have similar programs, which significantly impact our ability to, to, to run this program. Um, so we made that hard decision. We worked with parents, communicated with them around that. Um, and so, but we had to bring that, that program to close. However, knowing that, knowing that that's a milestone event, we thought it would be important tonight to recognize the person that 32 years ago started that program. Um, and that's coach, coach and teacher Victor Harris at Sycamore Junior High School and his picture's up there. So uh, we want to take just a moment and I will turn it over to our athletic director um, at Sycamore Junior High School, Mr. Jim DeJoy will say a few words about Coach Harris.
This may take a minute because I believe that Mr. Fritz is going to come and make sure that we can see the presentation.
That'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate your patience with that. Jim needs to speak.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you Frank for that introduction. Um, as Frank mentioned, my name is Jim DeJoy and I'm the athletic director here at Sycamore Junior High School. And I, it's really an honor for me tonight to uh, uh, present this um, recognition to my friend and colleague Victor Harris. Um, little background about Vic, uh, first of all, he is finishing up his 32nd year of teaching, 31 here at the, at Sycamore Junior High School where he's a social studies teacher. And also he's, he is the department head um, of the social studies department. Um, along with that, uh, throughout his career, he has coached three sports. It during, one during the fall, winter, and then spring. That is a huge time commitment. Um, many of our coaches on average only coach one, maybe two a year. Vic for 32 years has coached all, uh, three sports. So again, that takes a special person and definitely someone that has a lot of energy to um, to be able to do that. And I might have patience too on top of it. Um, but uh, along with Vic, uh, he is a very respected um, teacher here, not only at the junior high school, but he's also a very respected coach uh, here in the Sycamore schools. Currently Vic is our eighth grade football coach. Uh, he is the JV girls' basketball coach. And after his, uh, after uh, the baseball program concluded, he became our head boys lacrosse coach. And with that Victor Harris magic, our boys lacrosse coach is currently 11 and one right now. So um, that's, that's the magic of Victor Harris. That's, that's all I can say. Um, but um, but not only that, Vic is well-known in the community. Um, uh, his uh, family is Sycamore through and through. His wife Megan is a Sycamore graduate. Uh, his oldest son Ty is a junior at Sycamore High School. And um, his younger daughter Paige is a freshman also at the high school. So they are valuable people, not only in the Sycamore schools, but again, in the Blue Ash Montgomery uh, area. And uh, we're very pleased that they're, they're a part of our lives. So what I like to do right now, and Vic and I are in closed quarters, we're in my office right now. And um, and so I have an award for my, do have to stand up right behind me to pick it up. But we would like, we would like to present this plaque. Now Vic did give me the jersey about two or three months ago. He didn't know why he was giving it to me, but reasonable. And this is a well-deserving award for him and uh, most importantly, I am very proud to call him my friend. So with that, Vic, here you go, buddy.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, thanks everybody for this and uh, thanks, Sycamore's a special place. So thank you guys very much. Got a nice whoop, whoop there, appreciate it.
Way to go, Vic.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'd like to have my congratulations uh, as a board member, Victor, this is Brad. And I, of a personal note, I've had the pleasure of having you coach my daughter in basketball. And couldn't be more deserving person to get this type of a recognition. Thank you for everything you do to them on the court, on the field and off the court. You just make better, better, better graduates of our, of our district. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like, this is John Materio. I'd like to add Vic. Um, one thing Jim left out is that you also coach youth sports outside of Sycamore schools. And as somebody that's coached alongside you and considers you a friend, uh, I totally appreciate your total dedication to all the students and student athletes in Sycamore. So congratulations.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. I could do that. Is that Mrs. Weiss?
It is.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Victor.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
All right, some good news. All right, moving on to our superintendent's agenda. Back to you, Mr. Forstoppel and the Healthy Age's update.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss, member of the board. Um, as you know, we're, we are under 30 days remaining in this school year. But planning for 20 um, 21, 22 is, is moving along at, at rapid pace. So I'd like to turn it over to um, really the future pilot of that plane. Um, Mr. Lewis will give you some high-level things that are being discussed right now.
I know, but Mr. Fritz is catching up. So uh, I just want to give you a quick update and really not a lengthy update. You know, really regarding the decision for next school year. And we've received a little bit of communication and really the question that uh, continues to come up is why, why no virtual learning option at this point? So um, you know, what, what we've wanted to communicate, make sure we communicated to the community is that, you know, right now, we're, we're not in a place that the data or the information that we're receiving from the collaboration between all of us, our district administrators, our building administrators, our DART team, the data doesn't really support uh, that option at this point and juncture. And you know, I think it's important for our community to hear what factors we considered when doing it. So uh, the first one was just the improving pandemic conditions, you know? We look at the DART data every single week uh, and, and we have since really the start of the pandemic and, and onward. So if you look at our zip codes, it has dropped significantly since January and we're at our lowest level since the beginning of the pandemic. So again, we're seeing a major decline especially, and we've always committed that we would look at our zip codes in the absence of looking at the entire county. Uh, the second thing is, you know, our protocols, our healthy age protocols are working. Uh, several, one of our DART doctors has told us, we're putting them out of business with our healthy protocols because they are best practices for students to remain healthy and uh, we are seeing that impact. Um, our contact tracing has shown that we're not having in-school spread. So again, when students are getting COVID, it's outside of the normal school day. Um, certainly it's not lost on us, the whole child concept and the emotional uh, social and academic loss that students are experiencing not being in our doors every single day. So uh, that certainly is something that, you know, we, we take pride in and we believe that our face-to-face learning environment is best for students to reach their full potential. Um, and the last one is really, the state of Ohio does not currently uh, have an avenue that supports remote learning. Uh, we've even seen local districts that announced they were going to have a virtual option go backward and say, we are no longer going to have a virtual option. So in the absence of getting out there and telling our community, we're going to do something that we're not legally obligated to do uh, in the current format and the current model, you know, it may, it seemed irresponsible to do that at this point. So what we've always said is we're going to remain nimble and flexible and responsive to the needs of the pandemic. Should things turn or have a negative downturn and we're looking at our DART data and it says that, hey, there might be a concern, we'll revisit that option and we're prepared to pivot midsummer. I think probably the most important factor um, for our, our school district and our community is that it needs to be understood that the current model that we did was in response to the height of the pandemic. It is not sustainable in its current model. So the way that it currently looks for our families and for our students is not going to look that way going forward. It's, you know, the, the offerings would be lessened. You know, we certainly want to, we still believe in what we did and we believe in what our teachers can provide, but it certainly wouldn't be the robust model that we did at the height of the pandemic. So I think that's a, a clarifying point uh, for our community. The last thing is, you know, we, we put in our communications is that certainly if there are significant medical, medical needs uh, of our students that would prevent them from returning face-to-face and that it's well documented in either an IEP or a 504, they should contact our office of student services and have that conversation about those concerns. But in the absence of that, you know, we are looking forward to welcoming our families uh, back to a face-to-face uh, option in, in the fall, you know, pending the outcome of how things look with our, our data. So be happy to entertain any questions or comments from the board, but you know, that's, I thought that was an important clarification for our, our community and our students and certainly our, our teaching staff to be able to hear.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions or comments from the board?
No, I think for that, thanks.
The uh, only other piece that, you know, I think is, we, we talked about in relative to this is um, our, our schools had some great success this year uh, with students transitioning back into the schools to face-to-face models. Um, certainly, you know, they were experiencing a, a, a virtual model for the height of the pandemic at the beginning from March of last year to the end of the school year. Oh, and it, as you recall, we started school a little later to help with that transition, to be prepared for their return. And we did some different things to allow uh, for our schools to re-acclimate those students back into the face-to-face model. Um, what we would like to request of the board, and we're not bringing forward a calendar change at this point and, and at this juncture, and we would love to have, you know, hear any discussion or dialogue that you might uh, want to have on the topic. But we would like to enact that same model um, for next school year. And really what the model would look like is, is fairly simple and fairly similar to what we did last year, which is um, at some of our lower grade levels, they would split their, their uh, student body into really what would be considered two halves. Um, K through six is looking at half of the grade levels come on one day, you know, breaking it up by alphabet. And then the next day, the other half, and then by the third day, everybody's all in. Uh, at the older grades, we've been doing this for a long time at the high school. It's freshmen and seniors, and then the next day is sophomore and juniors, then by the third day, everybody's in. Uh, the junior high is looking at a little bit similar model to the high school. All seventh graders, new students, uh, some students that may have not been in session. And then uh, the next day, they would have everyone in. So um, what, the reason that we want to do that is really um, you know, looking at our whole child concept, really making sure that our students are re-acclimated to the school setting. Some of the students may have not have been in school since March of 2020. And we, we really feel like that transition day would be a huge bonus and a benefit to where we're trying to go. And getting kids comfortable again, bringing them back into the school environment. And I, I will say, um, I, I'm not, I can't say impotent strictly on the transition days, but this year, uh, even in the height of the pandemic, our students have been phenomenal. And allowing them to get acclimated to the school, uh, especially in that smaller environment with less students, it set a tone for the school year and the tone has really carried throughout the rest of the school year. So um, certainly happy to answer any other questions or hear any of the board's thoughts on that. But I think we feel strongly that K through 12, if we do this, that we believe it supports what our strategic plan is telling us and really focusing on, on our students and focusing on the whole child. We believe it sets them up for a great success uh, moving forward into the school year to accomplish some of the major goals that we have for our students and our staff going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, and I like the idea of the transition plan to, to really look at the whole student. I guess I would just need to learn, to learn the impact of what that does to the rest of the calendar. So I think that discussion needs to be had.
Yeah, I think essentially it makes perfect sense for our students. You know, we, we talk about getting kids comfortable in their environments, re-establishing relationships that were severed in March of uh, 2020, I think is a critical. Um, we know that, that entry into really for many kids could be a totally new environment for them would be really, really important. So I think Mr. Lewis and his team have really lasered in on an important aspect. Very, Mr. Bama, need to see kind of the bigger picture in terms of impact on other, other things in the calendar. And I know Mr. Lewis and the team will, so I'm in full support.
Our intent would be to bring those changes for discussion and subsequent um, approval if, if you're comfortable on May 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Forstoppel, master facility plan update.
Uh, yes, I'll just kind of uh, put around a batting tee for Mr. Lewis, but I think we're going to share some uh, you know, pretty amazing pictures and photos of, of at least some of the initial phases of some of our projects and our four pillars and kind of give the community a snapshot of where we're at. So Mr. Lewis, I appreciate your leadership as always.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Fritz, for advancing the slides. So yeah, just a quick, you can see there, a quick summary of this, the different contractors that are working in our buildings, just so you familiarize yourself with. HGC is, you know, what, working at our two uh, CM at risk buildings and then Graybach is at Green and Monarch is at the junior high. So you know, Sims Elementary, uh, you have seen some of the changes that have gone on and you can advance to the next slide, Mr. Fritz. Um, really this is the, I guess, the wow factor of the picture that I would want you to see. Mr. Fritz, can you minimize the uh, people that are, the list of people in our room? Cause it's blocking several of the pictures, like the, the names of the people that are on the, the video. It's okay if you can't, but so if you look at the aerial view of the wing, uh, you can see that the roof is going on. Um, and those are major changes that have happened uh, just recently over the course of time. So um, the site work is nearly complete except for um, you know, obviously there's going to be some major site work after we finish some of these areas. But um, we've got a new driveway cut in. Um, certainly site traffic has been sort of an issue, but we've managed to work around it. And Mrs. Ralston and her team deserve a lot of credit for the way that they've handled uh, the constant changes to that environment. And then you can see the kitchen addition is uh, starting and I was out there this week. It's, it's, you know, almost closed in around, not on top, but almost closed around on the sides. And then probably my favorite, and I know my colleague Anne is looking down upon me and smiling because this was always one of those things that she said, we don't have a stage. So I'm so happy to be able to say that they're going to have a stage. And she always said, it just didn't feel equitable to the other three elementaries and we're taking care of that. So very proud of that and that'll be a, an exciting new addition to Sims Elementary, especially with all the performances that they do as well. So uh, Mr. Fritz, you can go on to the next one. Green intermediate, obviously, uh, lot of site work and you can go on to um, just really getting prepped for um, getting ready for the new building to be able to be built on top of it. Not lost on us that have been doing construction for a while, there's always soil issues. We're dealing with a minor soil issue right now at Green, just, it's always about stabilization and making sure it's okay. Uh, you know, for those new footers of the building to be built upon. So you know, obviously you don't want to put it on top of unstable soil. So we're working through that issue. We always anticipate that. That's why you have contingency. But um, go ahead to the next slide, Mr. Fritz. And then you can see pretty much the same thing going on at um, Sycamore Junior High. And, and what I would tell you is, you know, this isn't lost on any of you. We have a lot of site difficulties with those sites, with being active construction sites and certainly keeping students in session. You know, we, we set out as a goal of, of a team here that we did not want to put students in temporary trailers and things like that. In order to do that, sometimes you have to make difficult decisions that impact the site. So you know, one of the difficult decisions that we're working through at the junior So, you know, one of the difficult decisions that we're working through at the junior high is certainly, you know, we're removing the home stands pretty soon of the stadium, which will impact, you know, events that can be held there. The parking and site circulation is dreadful. We've had to have, you know, an extra police officer down there to help traffic flow and really to help out not only our constituents and community members that don't have kids at the junior high trying to get through to go to work, but really to make sure that our parents and students can get in on time and get out on time. So logistically, we're working on, working with the city of Montgomery to build a temporary lot in front of the building. It'll be a temporary bus parking so that we can, we can close off that back lot and start to demolish the current theater that's in place. So that is about, about the middle of the theater is where the front of the building comes out to. So we definitely need that space. Mr. Fritz, next slide, please. And then the high school, it's just incredible to watch this, this building take, take shape. They have started the demo. A lot of the global, this is a lot of the global language area that previously existed. They've begun demo there. We have temporary walls up and they also have already completed all the temporary office moves and things of that nature. So that is actually demo in the main office, the current main, or previous main office now. But it's always incredible to see when they start tearing things down, what used to be. So a lot of demo by summer and by next full year, it'll look totally different. You know, the, the office area is going to be part of the music suite. Global language is part of art, engineering, that kind of stuff down in that area. So pretty exciting.
Yeah, I think every time I drive by Sims Elementary, there's something new and different there. It's amazing how fast it goes up.
Very exciting. Thanks for the update pictures.
Yes, thanks. Pictures really bring it to life. All right, moving on, I need a motion. Does anyone, I'm sorry, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I, this is John. I have one. I, I know that we had discussion around the themes within the buildings and we talked with SHP and we were going to stick with the aviator theme. And just a suggestion for future presentations to update all those slides that have the Bs in the buildings, so that in one of the slides. Just something for the future presentations.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Macario. All right, moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the change order for Sims Elementary School renovation project.
So moved.
This is a change order in the D-DUP, you know, which is always a good thing for the Board of Education to see for the Sims elementary school renovation project from two from HGC. You will notice that at the very bottom, that brings the GMP three total to seven million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents. So it's been adjusted based on these D-DUP.
Great.
Mr. Lewis, anything I missed there?
Just, there are electrical changes that are positive to our favor, so.
Great. Any questions, comments from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Macario.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
And Mr. Comer.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for the Sycamore High School renovation project.
So moved.
Second.
This is a change order in addition for the high school renovation project related to additional needs for chrome boxes and keyboards for a total of four thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents. And the board will notice that that adjusted total from GMP for the high school is listed there, GMP one, I should say.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Could I just clarify, who's seconded?
Paul Ballen.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Macario.
Hi.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Comer.
Hi.
And Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the amendment to the lease agreement with Ben Tom Properties LLC for our facility located at 11120 Kenwood Road.
So moved.
This is an amendment to our current lease for the address listed below, which currently houses now Abe's Academy and our Virtual Learning Academy. So, Mr. Lewis, do you want to give a little bit more details to the whys of what we propose in this report? Just, we still believe that we'll have a need to help us to get through construction with the number of moving parts and pieces to be able to have some additional space for some of our programming needs, just to have space to be housed. So the cost, if you remember, we, we signed a lease for the back portion of the building originally. That cost would be nearing seventeen plus dollars a square foot at this point. We were able to do some negotiation and get the entire space at fourteen, I think it's fifteen forty-five per square foot. So, you know, it's obviously cheaper for that area and it's actually cheaper for the middle area that we had three amendments. As we had needs increase, we had three different amendments to that original contract. So this, this third amendment essentially kind of brings it all together at fifteen forty-five for the whole space and has lower costs if we decide to opt in. It has a clause a hundred and twenty days in advance of the end of this new agreement, we would opt in instead of, so if we miss it, they're free to lease the space to anyone that says they see fit. But Mrs. Weber and I talked about the need to, instead of opting out, we want to be able to opt in so that we're not locked into the space.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
I did have a question, Mr. Lewis. When I read it, it looked like it was a three-year term.
It's a one-year term with opt-ins for years two and three. So if we don't opt in, we're not obligated to them.
Okay, thank you.
Art, now remember, Abe's Academy is a, we still have that for three more years in the back of the building. It's the, the middle section and the front section that we're able to opt in.
One question for Mrs. Weber. This goes into our operating budget.
We will make sure that we can allocate it within our operating parameters.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Comer.
Hi.
Mr. Macario.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Hi. Motion passes. Mr. Forstoppel, anything else?
Just briefly, an announcement I always like to highlight when our kids are going to be front and center showing off their talent. So this weekend, the junior high theater actually will do three performances called A Night to Remember. But for the community's sake, that performance will be held at the Sycamore High School Auditorium. Junior High Theater at Sycamore High School Auditorium. So we're, we're excited to see that and I know those kids are excited. But I think it's relevant to note that the directors involved with our kids at all levels really flex their creative muscles in terms of doing some different things to allow our kids to perform. As evidenced by the high school performance of Romeo and Juliet, the musical on the campus of West Elementary outside. When it appeared in my mind, thirty-two degrees and my feet were freezing. Those kids stood right up there and they really did a backup job. So kudos to the, our, certainly our students and kudos to our directors who put those things together. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forstoppel. Moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the treasurer's consent agenda.
So moved, John.
Second, David.
Mrs. Weber.
Just a few items to point out. You have increased the overall appropriation by about a little over eighteen million dollars since the last board meeting. Those are funds for our bond, construction budget to be able to pay for the high school guarantee maximum price amendment that was approved last meeting, as well as a few other items from the other, other projects that are in the master facility plan. You see several updates to the appropriation measure for federal funds. Those are based on a, an agreement or an amendment to our, our CCIP application for federal grants. Those are leftover funds from last year that have been released now from the feds to be able to use for this year. And if unused, in the rest of the school year will be utilized for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Okay, any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Macario.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. Comer.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Hi. Motion passes. Moving on to the fiscal year 2021 third quarter update.
All right, we are almost through the school year. I think I heard something like thirty-three days to go in last week's publication. But we still have a quarter to go, a little bit less than a quarter to go yet in the fiscal year. So just wanted to give you an update of the financial status through March 31st for our general fund and update on our master facility plan progress. We've been commenting on child nutrition for the last year, given the situation with the lower attendance within our buildings and the impact on our child nutrition plan. An update that Mr. Evans requested on some of our service contracts and then what's next for fourth quarter. So starting out with general fund, just a few of the highlights from this last quarter that we've been reporting on throughout these last few months. But I do have an update on, on real estate tax collections. We have, we have, through March 31st, we have caught up on timing of collections for last year and actually went a bit beyond at March at this point in time last year. So those have sped up a little bit. And then we have received our final settlement in April of our first half of two thousand twenty-one. And we have met our five-year forecast goal for the year. So, you know, continued to monitor, monitor those because we weren't sure in the current economic climate what kind of delinquencies we might experience. But they, the collection has been good and we've actually, as part of that collection, have seen some makeup of delinquency that we had experienced in the past. So that's good news. We have reported last month that the state, based on an executive order by Governor Dewine, has reinstated part of the state budget cut that the district had planned to receive this year was going to be about six hundred thousand dollars in a reduction, partial reimbursement by the governor has brought that budget cut to only two hundred and fifty thousand. I will note that that was on top of six hundred thousand dollar cut that we did incur in twenty, in the fiscal year twenty, which would have been the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. Through March, we have had a drawdown from our cash reserve due to COVID expenses, those additional dollars that the board had authorized to make sure that we were implementing a virtual academy so that we could hire additional teachers to, to do that, as well as to make sure that we were meeting physical distancing within our in-person units and supporting any kind of safety, PPE, all of those types of things. So through March, we had spent two point six million. We have applied for a grant through an ESSR grant that once approved will provide us reimbursement of about one point three million dollars of that two point six million. So that grant was submitted at the end of February. It has yet to be approved, but from what our understanding is, it's not about the grant itself. It's about the state of Ohio's budgeting authority for those dollars. And right now there are two different, two different bills going through the legislature that, once they're approved, we think those dollars will be opened up without any issues. So just waiting on that at the state level. That's it for the general fund. Any questions before I move on to the next section?
And the two point six is two point six of an estimated five. From what we might spend in total.
Yes. On the master facility plan, at our last meeting, we talked about being able to secure a new sponsorship agreement with TryHelp. And the question was asked of the two point five million in private funding that we had initially asked, was asked of our community on, to be able to move forward with some of our athletic projects, including new stadium at the high school. At this point, we have received three million dollars in pledges and/or from our health contracts. So very good news. We're not finished yet. We still plan to continue to have more of a formal campaign for support of all of those programs so that we can continue to enhance the athletic facilities as well as other, other projects at the high school. Just to point out that that does not include the three million dollar gift from the Seager family for the pool renovation. But overall, overall good news and great efforts and some really wonderful donors for, for those projects. We are nearly complete with our general contractor bids and our, our construction management contracts on the four building projects. So that being the high school renovation, the junior high green and as well as the Sims project that you saw earlier today. With all of this completed, about seventy-nine percent of our master facility project budget is allocated. So what hasn't been completed is a portion of the high school. The transportation facility, the athletic stadium facilities, those have not been, have been, the budget has not been obligated yet. So we're still working through some design process with those and we'll be probably fairly soon looking at that additional GMP for the high school. And we'll keep our fingers crossed on the transportation facility and being able to move forward with that. So making good progress. You can see an additional, it's kind of a summer report or a financial report this time. So I just ask you to look at that. Please send me an email providing some feedback on some additional information that you think would be helpful within that report as we move forward. Okay, next slide, child nutrition. Just continuing to provide an update. Our revenue did exceed our expenses for the third quarter of the year with an ending balance of nearly three hundred thousand dollars. So it's very similar to, to where we were at the end of second quarter. Just keep in mind that when, before the pandemic, when we basically had to shut down our child nutrition department, which is one of our self-sustaining departments. We had nearly a balance of nearly seven hundred thousand, but not, not having a operation for third, for fourth quarter of last year and then having much, much lower in-school attendance for our students with part, part of them being in the virtual classroom. We do continue to see some losses in, in that department. Fortunately, we have been provided an opportunity to participate in a federal program that is providing free meals to all of our students, no matter what their socioeconomic status. So Ms. Warren keeps working on it really hard and hopefully we will be able to end this school year with a similar cash balance. If we find that we do need to provide her some support, we will bring you back some options on how we would be able to do that. All right, next one. Mr. Evans asked that I just provide, looking at our comprehensive annual report, there's a listing of consultants and advisors that are, that work with the district in areas such as architecture, legal services, financial reporting, data processing. So I did provide a, a, three years of historic costs for those different groups, as well as our today allocation. And along with that, just tried to give you an overview of those items when they were last submitted for an RFP. At some points, their, the financial or the funding sources for them, many of them are primarily funded from our bond issue proceeds. Just so you can get an idea of all those types of things. What I would ask you to do is just review that in the next week or so. Any feedback that you might have in terms, I would guess of if there's an additional RFP you would like to see, if there are other areas you want us to consider and, and or you need more information. But hopefully that meets sort of what you were looking at. But hopefully that meets sort of what you were looking at, Mr. Evans. So you could see if there was anything else you thought we needed to monitor. All right, so what is up for next, for fourth quarter of the year? One of the projects that Mr. Lewis, Mr. Fritz and I are working on is going back through our five-year capital plan, given where we are with the bond issue projects, as well as some of the things that have come, come up with our technology needs. We're going to be working through a plan update and we hope to present that to the board at the next board meeting. We, we think we'll be able to get that accomplished. One of the reasons we want to do that is because as far as the permanent improvement funds, that is part of our five-year forecast. So we want you to be able to see how that impacts. We don't know that it's going to change a lot since the last time you've seen it, but there are some things within the bond issue budget, things like our transportation facility, land purchase potentially, that we just need to make sure that you have some idea of the impact within the capital plan for the district. We have been notified that we are going to get around three of COVID federal stimulus dollars. And I think I had mentioned this before, we thought it would be in the range of two to three million dollars. Those funds can be utilized for both next year's budget and the following. So it's basically a two-year plan. We are slated to receive just about three million dollars in additional COVID funding. We have not had an opportunity yet, because those allocations were just released last week, to come up with our plan. We will look through that, look at our needs, look at what the requirements of the grant are and bring back a plan to the board for, for your review. The one thing that I do believe we have talked about as something that we think is really important to utilize these funds is being able to offer a no-cost summer school for students in need of intervention. And so we will move forward with putting that in, in the grant. And we'll bring back other, other information about those things that we may see that will be needed, that we will need to have in place, you know, things like potential more PPE. We're not really sure what we're going to need in that area. You know, looking at whether we need to look at maybe a little bit smaller class sizes in order to be helping protocols for physical distancing and so on and so forth. So those are some of the things we're going to look at with those funds.
Mrs. Weber, can I ask a question? It's my ignorance, but the difference between an Essar grant and the dollars that you're saying we're getting, the two to three million dollars in the round three.
The first, the Essar dollars were about one point three million. This is three million dollars on top of that.
On top, okay, great.
All right. And finally, the state budget process is underway. The, I believe that the House passed their version of the state budget bill today. If they didn't do it today, they're going to do it tomorrow. They have integrated the Fair School Funding Plan within the state budget. We did receive some simulations of the impact for Sycamore. At this point in time, though, I need to study them a bit further because it's not just that this is what you got this year compared to. They, they pulled some other funding sources that we thought separately into the overall budget. I think we talked about Student Wellness and Success Fund. So I'm not quite sure what an apples-to-apples comparison is yet. The simulations were just released at the end of the day yesterday. And so I am going to be in a session tomorrow that hopefully will give a little bit more clarity on what the impact will be for us. I think just based on some preliminary discussions, what I would anticipate for the next two school years is probably pretty much flat funding. Other than they are going to reinstate all of the budget cuts that we've incurred from last year. So and what I say that, I mean, we're going to get all that money we've lost back. But we know that what we, there will be an increase of at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year from what we're getting this year. So they will reinstate those dollars. So no, no school is supposed to get less than what they've gotten in the past. So that's the key there. We did a number of districts in, in Senator Blessings area, Senate District Eight. We did convene a meeting with him last week. It was facilitated, facilitated by myself, the treasurer superintendent from Princeton City Schools and the superintendent from Northwest Local Schools. The one thing that he did make us aware of is that once the budget goes to the House, that the Senate is likely to make some, some changes from the House version of the budget. So that's another reason why talking about the simulations may not be real fruitful at this point in time, because we don't know that it's going to be adopted by the House. So we'll continue to keep you aware or informed of what the Senate does next. They will work through the process through the month of of May. And it'll probably go back to the full legislature at the beginning of June. We're not hearing anything that they think is going to take longer than the June thirtieth deadline. But it, it will, we'll see, probably see some significant changes when it goes through, through the Senate as compared to the House version. And with that, I just open it up if you have any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Just to, one on the, on the stimulus funds. I know we talked about using those to reimburse you know, what we've already spent. That's still the plan.
I believe that, that is an option for the new stimulus money as well. And we'll definitely keep that in mind as we're looking through it. But we also want to just make sure that we do take a little bit of time to see if there are other needs that we might have for the outcome, for the next, next few years, just to continue to meet those healthy needs for the cause.
I know it's a service provider, but I know there's some changes. Just reading through the comments that they'll be, well, to be, were some replacements if, if people, if we're not using the same providers in the future, or is there a process to go through to understand? If somebody's not going to be in that same role, how would we put someone else in a role to fulfill those services or requirements?
You know, it really would depend on, probably on which provider it is. For most of those, we have gone through a request or proposal process. And I think you've been involved in a few of those. You had us pick our bond underwriters. I think, I think the board, several board members have been involved in picking our architects. So if there was one that we decided we wanted to replace, we would probably do something like that. I, I think one of them that is included in there is the auditor of state does our audit. And unless they tell you, you can not use them, you have to use them. And I don't know, I guess I feel in some ways that they've audited us for probably about five years now. And I sort of take it as a compliment because I think they know they can come in, they're going to have a clean audit and they have a nice space and they have nice people. So they have, don't really want to give us that. I, I will also say it does help that they are located on Pinewood Road right down the street. So I think they feel like, you know, it's, it's an easy place for our staff to come and work close by and, and it helps us, you know, do our work better. So that's probably the one that we may not have a choice on. But the other ones could all be open to some kind of, of RFP process should we decide to, to change.
Right. All right, any other questions from the board? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the financial reports for March twenty twenty-one.
Salute.
Second.
Are there any questions?
No, I don't think so. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the Personnel Consent Agenda, including items, including items on the addendum, items two F, G, H, I, J, and K. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to other Board of Education business legislative liaison report.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Weber, for covering those key legislation pieces in your state budget report there. That's pretty much dominates everything that we're talking about right now. There is one other bill that we've been following with, that was sponsored by our Senator Steve Wilson. SB one, reminder, that's the one regarding teaching financial literacy in the high school. Just giving current status, that there's been nothing since the fourth hearing in the Primary and Secondary Education Committee meeting that was held on March twenty-third. I know last time that we talked about sharing our SAC presentation with Mr. Wilson. And I just wanted to follow up with Mr. Forstoffel to see what thoughts he had about our presentation.
Is this in regards to the financial literacy?
Correct.
Yeah, he was very pleased. He was, the Senator was very much impressed that we had taken this on as a thoughtful study. He was impressed with what we currently do, but he was impressed that we're thinking more broad terms of what we might want to do to expand that. My sense is, and I don't know this to be completely accurate, but my sense, he's going to take what we're studying, that he may use that in some way. Which is ultimately what we want, right? We want to provide motivation to our legislators to arm them with information to advance things that are of interest to us. So.
And I just want to, you know, thank Mr. Comifer and his, and you, Mr. Forstoffel for leading our SAC research arm. Because that's really the intent and it validates their work. So thank you very much.
Thank you for making the connection, Mr. Mercurio.
Certainly. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mercurio. Moving on to the Audit Liaison Update. Mr. Evans, you have some amazing news.
Huh? I do, well, I have news, but I think the, the more important thing is for Mrs. Weber and her whole team for, you know, getting awarded with honors and distinction from the, the honor of the state for, you know, everything they do. And, you know, I think one of the things that I'd say about this award and the ability to win it is, it's not just one person. It's got to be the entire team to put this in, because it is a comprehensive look at the district and at what we do. There are a number of different criteria that go into it. Some of them are basic as far as having clean financials and good information put together. But there's also a piece of looking at the entire management report and the team and getting sure that they have clean ethical standards and there are no write-ups within the report that would, you know, go against the district of that team. So it goes broadly against, you know, the whole district and how we enforce policies and how people understand and follow, follow and do the right things. So all that adds into that. Plus there are, we have to put together a comprehensive, a financial report, the CAFR. So that is one major element. And I know this is what we're, puts a lot into the details that go into that. There were probably a hundred schedules or something that get pulled into that. And if you go through and just look at the history and some of the other elements of that, all that needs to be correct and consistent. And then it goes into the narrative and the write-up. So congratulations, this is whatever you and your team, it's not just one piece. But I think you leading them and being able to put all that information together year over year to be able to do that consistently. And that's a, a big testament to the, to the entire team and the leadership you put into that stuff. So again, congratulations. And it was exciting to see the picture of the the secretary, the, um, Mr. How to talk to you today for that and to present the awards to the team.
The auditor of state visiting us. Again, he did know, I, I think it was our sixth time in a row receiving this award. So thought it was time to make a visit to see what was going on. I guess we, my, my team is in the picture as well. And they absolutely are the key reason that we're able to get it done, as well as the work out the buildings of many of the associates who keep track of things and, and work with us to make sure that we're in compliance. And so it's, it's a great effort. Great picture. And thank you, Mrs. Weiss, for being able to be there with us today as well.
My pleasure. Can you just name that your team for us?
Yeah, along with auditor Faber, we, in our picture, we also have Kathy Neuner, who is the Assistant Treasurer. Haley Rust is the payroll supervisor through April four, or April thirtieth. And then she is actually going on to become the Assistant Treasurer at the Hamilton County ESC. So good luck, Haley. We think we, we helped her become, trained her well. I know she'll do great things. And then Andrew Siero is new to our team and does accounts payable. So she's been a great addition to our team as well.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Well deserved. All right, moving on to Sycamore Advisory Commission Report, Mr. Comifer.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. On April twelfth, we met as the commission and got an excellent presentation on a multi-tier compensation strategy for administrative staff. I thought it was a rich discussion. I was able to forward those slides already to the board. I know that's some, some interest to learn more. I thought it was a nice, it was a very good presentation. I was really pleased with the research that that team did. So thank you. On May, we have our fourth and final presentation of the year. The topic is engaging to seventy percent with a group level assess, assessment. And what we mean by that is seventy percent of our taxpayers currently do not have a student that was, that comes to our buildings on, or gets education virtually, either one. So we have seventy percent of our taxpayers who are directly affiliated with the school. How do we reach and communicate with them better? And that's what we'll, that's what we'll learn from this study in May. Looking forward to that as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Comifer. And lastly, strategic planning update.
So lots of momentum. I want to thank Mr. Lewis and Mrs. Wagner. I'm assuming Mrs. Wagner's on the call, but I'll let them to give a brief update. I know the project leadership teams are really off and running and engaged.
That's, that's really the update that we would have for you is, you know, we have four project teams that are up and running and, you know, off and running. They've had their first meeting. They're scheduling their second meeting. And what they're all working on is, with Mrs. Eggers, is project leadership statements to really develop the team. And then, once we get past that process, it's really the co-leads of each team that are going to take the leadership role and advance the group. So, and we have the curriculum audit, essentially the curriculum and teaching and learning team that's looking at that development. Mrs. Wagner and, and several others are leading that. We have the data team that's being led by Mrs. Weber, Mrs. Spencer, and there are several other, you know, key members that are on that team. And I want you to know that the composition of each team is, we have mixture of teaching staff. We have a mixture of administrative staff. And then we also, you know, per our collective bargaining agreement, we have an SEA designated rep that by contract, they're allowed to designate one rep. But throughout there, there's other teachers that were selected by our co-leads of each group. And then certainly SEA selected a member to be on those teams as well. And then the building leader team is the only team that does not have teachers on it, for good reason. The work doesn't impact their work at all. It's, you know, about building leaders. And so myself and Mr. May are leading that team. And then oh, the culture development team is being co-led by myself and Mrs. Combs. So we, we have a, and I will say, I, I had that meeting a few weeks ago and, you know, you felt energized after leaving the discussion. And you wanted, we were there for two hours and we wanted, everybody wanted to stay for four. I mean, it was that energizing of work. So I would say all of the teams are excited about the work that they're doing. I think I got a lot of positive feedback from the teachers that are engaged and involved in the meetings and saying, really appreciate being involved in the work and looking forward to furthering the work. really appreciate being involved in the work and looking forward to furthering the work. So you know, I think our next steps with the strategic planning process is making sure that we get some additional communication out there. I I provided Mrs. Weiss some dates, some potential dates right now that we would like to get some feedback sessions and get some information out to the community. I'm proposing a lunchtime session like we did with the master facility plan, but also that same day do an evening session. So we can try to be available to our constituents. If the date doesn't work for us, we can certainly move it. And then, you know, really, we're working on some video communication that we'd like to get out to teaching staff and also to the greater community. It would be in snippets. Realistically, people don't watch things are over a minute long. So we're looking at probably a series of five or six videos that will go out with a mixture of myself, Mrs. Wagner, teaching staff, other people that are on some of the project teams. And then the last task that we have to do with strategic planning is we we need really come together and develop a steering committee. We have some people that, as as a board rep and then other individuals that are leading the process, myself and Mrs. Wagner and some of the co-leads will be on that group with we've asked SEA leadership to provide some membership to that committee as well. So I think we're we're in a good place and I think we're going to be able to hit the ground running next year and really get some of these year-one high-level goals accomplished and looking forward to bringing those updates back to the board and and sharing our progress with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does the board have anything else? Mr. Forstoffel, anything else for you? Mrs. Weber? Mr. Lewis? Okay, with that, I need a motion to go back into executive session in accordance with ORC one two one dot two two G Y, Employment Dismissal Evaluation Compensation Appointment and Discipline of a Public Employee Official or Regulated Individual.
Submove.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballen.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Comifer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, everyone, for attending and have a good evening.